The computer still says 1:59.
Good afternoon. I call to order the City of Powell River Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, August 19, 2025, to order and acknowledge Klaman Territory and the Klaman people as stewards of this land since time immemorial. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. I'll just look quickly to staff. Were there any last minute changes that needed by staff in the agenda today? No? All right. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion to adopt from Councillor Dought, seconded by Councillor So-- oh, we don't need seconders at Committee of the Whole. This is my first time chairing Committee of the Whole since we updated our procedure bylaw. So for those in the public, we no longer need seconds. And also a reminder for me, we no longer need seconds to motions at Committee of the Whole. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Were there any changes that council wishes to see in the agenda today? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Second item of business is motion to close the meeting to the public. We have a recommendation. Could I have a member of council start that? Councillor Elliott.
I move that the committee move into a closed meeting to discuss matters covered by the community charter under section 91e, the acquisition disposition or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality.
And again, no seconds. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So we are going into closed now up in the committee room and we will reconvene the public portion of the meeting at 3:30 in council chambers.
God, you're odd. You're not limping. You seem to be walking pretty smooth. Alright? Good.
Seems to be walking pretty smooth.
Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening the council meeting for City Powell River Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, August 19th. We started the meeting at 2:00 PM where we adopted the agenda and then we had the closed portion of our meeting agenda. For the territorial acknowledgement tonight, I'll say. That is my approximate translation of what I understand, a territorial acknowledgement to be acknowledging Klaman people and their stewardship of this land since time immemorial. So first item tonight is the public input period. The public input period provides up to three members of the public to have an opportunity to provide comment for a maximum of two minutes on the items listed under legislative matters, committee recommendations, or new business. Tonight, we don't have legislative matters or committee recommendations, and under new business, we have grants and aid and the provincial nomination program. So those are the two things that council is considering that people are free to provide input on. So open it up for a public input period now if anyone would like to speak to those items. And if you want to speak to those items, you can stand up at the podium.
Afternoon. My name is John Bronsell.
Welcome.
From Westfield. I'm just wondering if council misinterpreted the citizens' support of leasing and selling municipal properties.
So tonight, our procedure bylaw for the public input period indicates that the areas that the public can provide input on are under certain portions of our agenda. So that's not up for a discussion or debate tonight. Council's not deciding on that. And so council has heard a number, has received a number of input by email, and I expect we'll continue to do so, but that's not on our agenda tonight. Thank you. Any items? All right. Anyone calling online? No. All right, we'll move on to general matters. The first item is delegations. So just a reminder for the delegations tonight, delegations are five minutes long. I'll try to give you a reminder at the one-minute mark. And council, our role is not to be in a Q and A period. This is for us to listen. We may ask questions of you. And a reminder to the committee that we do not make resolutions out of, in response to delegations, but we can bring them forward at future meetings. So first delegation tonight is Drina McCormick, Cut That Chapter of the Council of Canadians Regarding Transit Issues. Ms. McCormick, welcome.
This is on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of my organization, a chapter of the Council of Canadians. We said in our application that our purpose tonight was to focus attention on transit issues and solutions, which I know the council is often concerned with. We'd like to clarify the role of the city in resolving transit issues and highlight benefits of a more integrated transit service. We also are hoping to advocate and have you advocate for intercity transit to Vancouver, specifically for bus services between Earls Cove and Seashelt in particular. We believe that frequent, reliable, and convenient transit services the community in multiple ways. It's not just another way to get around town or between cities. It contributes to a safer, cleaner city, is much more environmentally friendly than individual vehicles, and helps support disadvantaged groups of our population, youth, seniors, the disabled, those on low incomes who don't want to or cannot drive for one reason or another. The city, the B.C. government spends $800 per person per year on highway construction and improvements, but only $215 on urban transit, $50 on byways and bike lines, and $2 a year per person on interregional buses. In your package, I gave you a copy of the executive summary of Connecting B.C., which is a fabulous study that came out, and anybody can access this online. It's a 10-year vision and investment plan for transit throughout B.C., endorsed by the B.C. Federation of Labor and the mayors of many cities, including Burnaby, North Van, Port Coquitlam, and Langley. We were fortunate to have a great presentation last fall on this plan when speakers were brought in by Cassette Community Voices and our chapter. They argued that their plan would bring these gains to communities: stronger local economics because transportation is more efficient, moving people and goods more quickly, more affordable transportation options for families, saving on gas and vehicle expenses, would mean fewer cars on the road and congestions, would mean more skilled workers having jobs building transit and infrastructure, 12,000 jobs across B.C. for operators, supervisors, mechanics, and others working on the new system, thousands more, higher revenues for local and provincial governments, and more livable communities. It would be a big step forward, and they're imagining trying to build this over 10 years in B.C., step by step. We know that municipal governments have very little power or resources to enact these plans by themselves, but we urge you to join others, like the mayors of other cities, in lobbying and advocating on behalf of your city whenever and whenever you can to work together with other levels of government to make progress on those issues. Our second ask in the package that we gave you. Oh, I just got to.
One-minute warning.
Okay. Was to support and to ask the city to place a crosswalk in the northern end of the Transit Exchange for the safety of passengers and to provide shelters, benches at the mall for the exchange. It's unfortunate that the city must negotiate with a private landowner to provide our bus exchange. The road that cuts right through the dividing, the mall area from other retail outlets would ideally be a public road, and you would have better controls on the entrance and exit. But I really urge you to improve the access for foot passengers getting to and front transit there. And the other issue that we are concerned about is the access to bathroom facilities for bus drivers.
Thank you.
I think I ran out of time for the rest of my presentation.
Thank you very much. If you could stay up with our maybe questions from council. So I see councillor Palm and then councillor Dow.
Yes, through the chair, Ms. McCormick. Appreciate your presentation today.
Councillor Palm, can you just speak into the microphone a bit closer? Speak into the microphone a bit closer?
This mic always got me on the edge. Oh, first of all, through the chair, Ms. McCormick, thank you for coming in today. This is a longstanding issue in our community. There's no doubt about that. Councillor Dow was tasked with trying to resolve this when we lost the bus service to our community some time ago in connection with the regional district in Klauhman through our open meetings, 3C meetings with those entities. And he can give you a lot more information as to the roadblocks that he found in his way and why nothing materialized. But one of the things that I see as a distinct possibility, because we're in negotiations with B.C. Transit, and they're doing their studies in our region, one of them is studying our Zanga bus and see how that might fit into their service, which is not scheduled to come forward for another year or two yet, and that report. That Zanga bus, which is costing the city taxpayers a great deal of money, and we are subsidizing each trip on that bus quite heavily.
Councillor Palm, do you have a question for the delegation?
I'm just, I'm just saying that that Zanga bus could be, may be put to a use to serve our ferry at Saltre Bay. So I don't have any questions to ask you, other than I'm going to turn it over to councillor Dow, who will give you an education as to all the problems and issues that we ran into the first time around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dow. Any questions?
I have a comment, and then I will, and that will explain the question that I'm going to ask. So as councillor Palm is correct in saying, I did quite a bit of work on the regional district with other regional districts and with B.C. Transit to try to work on the concept of an intercity bus that would get you with public transit from Powell, from the city of Powell River to Horseshoe Bay with a, with one ticket. And that's not as simple as it might sound. First off, if you want to do that through, through B.C. Transit, you have to create a transit authority, which they're not very happy to do. They're, it's difficult to get them to do that, to get more than one municipality or regional district to work together, because they're used to dealing individually with each municipality and each regional district. That's one issue, to convince B.C. Transit to do that. And that's a political discussion that has to happen. The other one is within each regional district, because the regional districts are different than a municipality. If you're going to provide a service in a regional district like public transportation, you have to convince the voter in each one of the electoral, voters in each one of the electoral areas that will participate to pay for it, because that's where the money has to come from. In the case of the Lower Sunshine Coast, the challenge is getting people in the northern electoral areas to agree to pay for a transit system, because when they consult the people that live there, they say they don't want to pay for it. That's another hurdle to get over. The next one is, is B.C. ferries. If you're going to coordinate a, a public transportation by bus, you have to get B.C. ferries to work with you to do that. As you'll see, I was reading the paper today, and it's got the announcement that bus changes on the Sunshine Coast between, between the terminal in Gibson's and Seashelt are changing because the ferry schedule is changing. So you have to get B.C. ferries, you have to get B.C. Transit, and you have to get all of the regional districts and all the electoral areas involved in approving that.
We need a comprehensive.
I think, I think we should do that.
Excuse me.
My question, which the chair is going to make me get to, is have you approached the Cassette Regional District, the Sunshine Coast Regional District, B.C. Transit, and B.C. ferries with your requests?
We have approached B.C. Transit and B.C. ferries with letters. We haven't approached the regional district yet. But that's why we're strong advocates of a plan, of a comprehensive B.C. plan. No one city council or regional district can solve these problems on their own. It require, it does require that coordination.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Elliot, then councillor Southcott.
Thank you, Chair. So I also work over at the regional district and have been part of the B.C. Ferries Advisory Group when we had them. And this matter came up quite often, was the coordinating of all of the different entities. There's a couple of processes going on right now and soon to be going on that might feed into that. So B.C. Transit is going to be doing a review of the services in, in our region, and they do periodic reviews of other regions. We raised this issue of the connectivity through when they did their last presentation as part of telling us how their process would work. And the answer we got over at the Q R D was there are areas in the Lower Sunshine Coast Regional District that have not agreed to have transit in their area. And so they said there would need to be some kind of other authority that didn't involve that regional district in order to put service through their area, because in the regional district, areas are allowed to opt out and not be part of a service. And so it would have to be a service that, that went through their area but did not serve their area and that they did not pay for. And so that is a difficult, more complex process than if they had bought in to what we wanted to do. And so that's where we're at at the moment. And I don't actually have a question. I just wanted to say, we, I agree, and we share, and we do go and advocate and try to talk about these issues on a regular basis.
Thank you, councillor Elliot, councillor Southcott, and then the mayor.
Thank you, Chair. No, no question, but I do have two simple suggestions. One is that you invite probably one of these two councillors here who've had years of experience in this issue to one of your association's meetings to strategize as far as utilizing your efforts as the best way, and also figuring out what, what you can do feasibly to assist in this long process that isn't resolved yet. And the second is, I'd just like to move that staff provide answers to the operational questions. There's both political and operational questions, and a very adequate delegation materially provided for us, and we really appreciate that. But I think staff could give you just some nuts and bolts, answers to two or three of the questions that are operational.
Thank you. And maybe as a follow-up to councillor Southcott's comments, I'm wondering if there's, I see we've got some staff here. Are there any quick answers to the items related to the Transit Exchange, the shelters and the access to drivers for washroom facilities? Is there anything that can be shared in quick order this time?
Yes, one, two. Looks like I'm on through the chair. So we are working with the mall owner on a, an agreement for three shelters at the mall to be installed there, that the city would install and maintain. And also, also the washroom. So it's a, at the moment, it's a, it would be a shared washroom, but it would be available to drivers at any time. So, so those are the two, two items that we're working on with the, with the mall owner at the moment.
Do you have any sense of timeline?
So we've, actually, we're sending that agreement, the draft, I think, is, is ready to go, I think, this week for, for their review. So a little back and forth after that.
Thank you. Mayor Wasno.
Thank you. Through the chair, we've had discussion on this item, and we got elected. My question is, since we have a MLA who is the cabinet minister, have you approached her and asked her if she would make this a priority?
Yeah. And we'll be going back to her soon. Yes.
Thank you.
Because I think it, it has to be imposed from above.
Thank you. Any further council, questions of council? Seeing none. Oh, councillor Palm.
Just through the chair, have you approached the mall owner or anyone else in regard to your suggestion of some benches so that the patrons can see the buses approaching, get out of the weather, out of the sun? Have you talked to anybody about that directly?
Not the mall owner, just the city and transit people who were there doing the presentation a few weeks ago. In fact, we were very pleased to see the progress that had, has been made recently. So it kind of spurred us on to just keep pushing for more. But it, it never occurred to me to, to approach the private property owner. That's a bit weird way to promote public transit, I think.
Slightly ask the question, because I think that's an excellent suggestion on your part that would provide relief for our most vulnerable that are accessing that bus on a regular basis. And I'd like to follow that discussion up with staff at some point, and I intend to do so. So thank you for bringing that forward today.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for all those suggestions.
All right. Next delegation, and I, and I forgot to mention, even though we, I didn't have to respond there, that in order to maintain decorum to respond there, um, that, um, in order to maintain decorum in council chambers, there's no cheering or booing. Uh, we try to support every speaker that comes to the podium, uh, and make sure that as much as possible, the, the space is free from, uh, intimidation. So next speaker is, uh, Sherry Burton and Kathy Corlech, Westview Ratepayer Society's Supportive Housing Subcommittee Regarding 24/7 Shelter and Overdose Prevention Site Project 7104 Barnett Street, City's Responsibilities as Lesser and Protecting the Community. Welcome.
Um, thank you. Before I start, um, I don't need the one minute warning, I've timed myself.
Okay, thank you.
I'll find that more disruptive, so.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Uh, my name is Sherry Burton, representing Westview Ratepayer Supportive Housing Subcommittee. Joining me today is Kathy Corlech, Vice President of Westview Ratepayers Society. Westview Ratepayers ardently supports shelters, housing and programs for individuals experiencing adversity and/or homelessness. It has been proactive in raising ongoing issues and concerns with council, M L A Neil and B C Housing regarding B C Housing's policies, particularly in relation to the management and operation of its local housing and service programs. On July 30, B C Housing announced its new project on Barnett Street, a 24/7 shelter and overdose prevention site. This is a temporary shelter until the new supportive housing shelter complex care facility is built adjacent to the hospital. The city published a legal notice announcing its lease with B C Housing for $10 for the entire five-year term. Since the closure of the overnight shelter, we have witnessed increased hardship among unhoused individuals and growing concerns from residents and businesses. We are here today to advocate for a balanced, compassionate and safe approach to this new project. Pursuant to the four pillars of harm reduction, prevention, treatment, harm reduction enforcement, council's responsibility to consider the well-being interests of the municipality and its community, and the city's responsibilities as landlord lesser of this project, we make the following five requests. One, the terms and conditions of the lease between the city and B C Housing must protect and safeguard the community. The city must prioritize compliance and ensure lease terms are being fulfilled. When breaches occur, it must pursue enforcement. Two, security should be provided 24/7 by an independent third party, not service provider employees. The community, including shelter clients, experienced employee-led security at the former overnight shelter, the city and council are fully aware that this model was inadequate and failed to protect both the community and shelter clients. If council does not support independent security, we respectfully request that clear rationale be provided to the community. Three, we strongly recommend that the overdose prevention site not be co-located at the shelter site to ensure safety and compliance with ministry and Vancouver coast health standards. Attach to this delegation the following supporting documents, the O P S minimum service standards, overdose prevention site manual and maps of O P S sites in and outside Vancouver. At present, the current O P S at New Roots Clinic is being operated contrary to the ministry and Vancouver coast health standards. For the safety of employees, community members and unhoused sober individuals and to protect the privacy of O P S clients, co-location at the, of the O P S at this site is detrimental, inappropriate and will contribute to more antisocial incidents. Four, the proposed 24 shelter must be inclusive and operate at the dry facility. Permitting drug use within the shelter combined with O P S will exclude individuals in recovery, seniors, youth and those fleeing trauma who may feel unsafe or unsupported in such an environment. A dry facility ensures broader accessibility and dignity for all. Five, on behalf of individuals experiencing adversity and/or homelessness and local residents and businesses, the council submit and support a formal request to B C Housing for an independent third-party audit of lift community services. Concerns raised by residents and businesses have been substantiated by former service provider employees and current and former supportive housing, housing shelter clients. An independent audit would not only address communities' concerns but also provide valuable insights to strengthen service delivery and rebuild public trust. It is council's responsibility to ensure the entire community is protected. Implementing these requests will enhance the likelihood of success for the project by minimizing negative impacts and ensuring the safety and well-being of residents, businesses and B C Housing, V C H clients alike. Please respond to each of these requests so that we can share the outcomes and continue working collaboratively towards solutions. By working together with council and B C Housing, we hope to mitigate negative impacts of the 24/7 shelter and O P S project, deliver the needs and services, programs and services for individuals experiencing adversity and homelessness and ensure the safety and well-being of residents, businesses and B C Housing, V C H clients. Thank you for your time, attention and commitment to the well-being of our community.
Thank you very much, well-timed. Um, no, no applause, thank you. So, uh, we're gonna open up with, uh, again, questions and I, based on the last round, it's questions and also we, there may be advice for the, the delegations today. Um, and so I'll do a, a round of interest. So Councillor Southcott first.
Thank you very much. I appreciate how concise and comprehensive your report is and also the associated documents, they're very, uh, current and they're very interesting, definitely updates for me.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt for a minute? Uh, your sound is terrible. Nobody can hear it.
Really? I don't know what to do about that. Um, okay, I'll speak a little clear, more clearly perhaps. Uh, I have one question. Actually, I have a whole slew of questions, but as I went through your document and I, I wrote questions down, they basically boiled down to essentially one question, and that is a question of feasibility. Have you, of your requests? Now, it's easy to expect someone who you're making requests of to figure that out for themselves, which would be us or staff or whoever. But I think that work, useful work could be done in terms of investigating and possibly figuring out feasibility of these requests and possibly even by involving probably one of your choice of coun, council members, uh, or the Mayor. Um, and I'm just one, so my question is, have you considered that? Have you considered, uh, in, investigating feasibility, uh, to extend this really good work that you've already done?
So, uh, we've tried to directly deal with B C Housing and, and, uh, we've also asked for a task force and we've met resistance. So we're coming to council, uh, in your, um, responsibility to protect the community to help, to, uh, there's, there needs to be pushback from the council, from the municipality to B C Housing over their housing first policies. It needs to be implemented in a much more inclusive, thorough way than what we've already experienced, six years of housing first. And that's not working for the community, including especially supportive housing and shelter clients.
Thank you. Uh, oh, a second question?
So I just want to make my suggestion again, and that is that you work with one of, one of us at the table here to, to take, I think you could make, I think you could take steps farther forward.
Okay.
Um, I thought we've already made those requests and they've not.
All right. Uh, other questions of council? Uh, Mayor Wasno.
Thank you, through the Chair. I appreciate you, time and effort you put into this. Probably aware that I tried for many years to get security put in place and, uh, it was a slew of what I considered to be unreasonable reasons as to why Lyft operating on behalf of the, uh, housing authority would not do that. So to me, again, I'll, I'll make the same question. Have you engaged our M L A in her role as a minister to provide some direction to the minister who's responsible for B C Housing and the deputy minister?
Uh, we submitted, um, at the beginning of July on email to B C Housing, to the minister, then at that time it was Ravi Kalan. So, um, and we are waiting response to, because we were advised by M L Neil's office, who we've been dealing with quite regularly this, over the summer, to deal now directly with B C Housing and she would support that. Then there was a new housing minister came in and, uh, as the summer has gone on and obviously with the, knowing they were going to be announcing this shelter and, uh, O P S, um, that's not been, gotten reached the top of the list. And my understanding from L, M L E, M L A Neil's office is now that BlackBerry Festival is over, um, that push is now going to be made by M L A, M L A Neil. Um, but we're doing the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question for you. Uh, I'm wondering about, um, the housing subcommittee. Uh, I, I'm really interested in your recommendation number four about a dry facility. Uh, and I'm wondering, um, is the, the terms of reference of your subcommittee, are you active at all in like looking for potential sites or, uh, operators for a, a dry facility? Like, is that in the?
Yeah, I think you're quite aware of that. M L A Neil is also aware of that.
Whether, whether that's within the terms of reference of your committee is what I'm asking.
Committee's been working with, um, trying to find, uh, suitable accommodations for that.
Okay, thank you. I just, um, because I, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly with, um, with that recommendation in the sense that, um, uh, it doesn't serve everyone to have a, a low barrier shelter. It meets the needs of many people, but it doesn't meet the needs of any. Um, and so two years ago at U B C M, we did meet with B C, um, uh, with senior B C housing staff about, it's not only shelter but supportive housing and also transition housing where two would be, um, really helpful. And so if there's, um, active work on, on that, I absolutely would be willing to, to get involved with that. Um, any other questions? Councillor Palm or?
Yes, thanks, Chair. First of all, um, Ms. Burton and Ms. McCormick, I just want to thank you for coming forward here today. Uh, you know, with all the concerns that are going on in our community and, uh, you know, the two fractions, safety of community and compassion for those in, affected by our drug, uh, situation. It's a tough situation to deal with on a regular basis, especially when you're sitting here, but I just want to assure you, the first thing on my mind is safety of the residents of our community. And all of your suggestions that you've made today, I wholeheartedly support. And I will be taking those suggestions forward when we meet with the entities that you've, uh, outlined here in a closed session that I think is planned on Thursday. And I'm going to ask for some pointed answers and why can we not get some answers and some movement on, on these excellent suggestions that you've made? One thing that I will say, have you, uh, have you planned to do any type of follow-up with the residents of the community in terms of perhaps a petition and getting some signatures to back up your ask? Because in the long term, maybe not the short term, but in the long term, those can be presented to the powers that be in the province, at U B C M, at A V I C C, knowing that the people of Powell River want to see change. And, you know, it, we've been dealing with this for a long period of time now. We need to get to the bottom and find a better solution to what we're doing. So I, I thank you again for both being here today.
Thank you. No applause, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much, speakers.
One more little quick thing.
Quickly.
We're all concerned about the encampments for the people living in them and how it impacts the community. And this shelter, the way it's going in, there's still going to be a lot of people are not going to feel safe going into that shelter. We're still going to be dealing with encampment. So B C Housing really needs to step up and we need your help to, awesome to do that.
Thank you. Great. Uh, thank you to our speakers. And the final delegation tonight is, uh, Tony Stitch, Brienne Bennett and Emily Holland, S O U L or Seoul, regarding community concerns and alternative, and alternative to B C's current harm reduction approach and introduce Seoul.
Afternoon. My name's Tony Stitch. If you'd, uh, allow me to use a minute and a half of my time to, uh, well, Flash to, uh, play a song about recovery for the, oh?
Yeah, you're welcome to use your five minutes how you like. Um, we, we asked that you use the microphone so that people who are listening online and for the recording can hear as well.
That's, uh, you can start the timer. Richka O C M, uh, Flash being, that's a welcome from Slawtooth Nation. I'm also a drum carrier for them. Um, and I'm in recovery myself. This song is, uh, called Ain't Going Back to Hastings. Um, kidding, I suppose. I write a lot, poetry, I've speak, I've spoke a lot, I've worked with homeless people. Misadvan from Edmonton to Tofino, actually. Uh, yeah, just listen through. I thought I'd write this down on paper. Or to prove, prove it can't be done. I will my guitar in my corner. My war against addiction is won. Well, it's a long, I said a long way back down there. It's a long, oh, a long way back down. Well, it's a long, I said a long way from that highway. And I ain't going back, not to hell. But if you look back, you're always in danger. Well, there was bumps up ahead on their paths. But I told her I'd write this down on paper. Burn it down, I'm not ever looking back. Cause it's a long, I said a long way back down there. Well, it's a long, well, a long way back down to that block. And all the work that I put in in them ceremony. Well, I ain't going back, not to Hastings. Now I told her I'd write this down on paper. There was a crease down the center where I fold. There was one last little light from that lighter. My lyrics, they're gonna be bought and sold. My soul won't be bought or sold. Well, it's a long, I said a long way back down there. There's a long way from East Hastings to the coast. But I made it about through them ceremonies. If I didn't have my guitar, I'd still be on that dope. So, uh, in turn, you got like a minute left there, dude. And, uh, without ceremony and, uh, I really like what she said.
Oh, pardon me, Speaker, you'll have to speak in the microphones so people online can hear and in the room. Thank you.
I really like what she said, all of her ideologies. Um, it's not really about shelters handing out free dope and, uh, these insight prevention programs and stuff aren't working. They haven't worked. From Edmonton to Tofino, I've seen it. He's got a lot more to say on that and I'll give him his one minute. Uh, music, ceremony, well healed, that's all.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Tony Stitch and I'm here representing Seoul, speaking out uniting lives, a coalition of lived experience, truth tellers and community advocates. Our mission is simple but urgent to expose harm, to end silence and work towards real recovery-centered solutions for our community. We're here because we're deep, we care deeply about Powell River and its future and because we believe there's a better way forward than the path that we are currently on. Over the past five years, Powell River has felt the effects of B C's Over the past five years, Powell River has felt the effects of B C's harm reduction policies. We've seen an increase in public drug use in the parks, schools, and in public spaces, rising concerns from residents about safety and community livability. People in crisis left without a real option for treatment or recovery. We want to be clear, our concerns are not with individuals who struggle with addiction. We know addiction is a disease, not a moral failing. Our concerns are with a system that enables ongoing use without equally investing in prevention, treatment, and recovery. The current imbalance is hurting the very people it claims to help.
Mr. Stitch, I have to interrupt you for a second because we're at our five minutes. If I would another 30 seconds be all right to?
Yeah.
All right, we got unanimous consent from Council. Continue on.
In our community, including residents, are reporting more and more public disorder and safety issues alongside with recorded deaths. Our prominent voice within our province, like former Vancouver Mayor and Council, Police Officer Brian Montague is calling for harm reduction strategies, a disaster because it sidelines prevention. Seoul is asking the city of Powell River to support, to publicly support a balanced four pillar approach to prevention, treatment, enforcement, harm reduction, rather than focusing exclusively on harm reduction. Advocates to the advocating to the province for increased funding for detox, recovery beds, and mental health supports right here in Powell River, partnering with Seoul to develop a community strategy for safety that puts both public safety and recovery at the front. This is not about politics, it's about people. It's about ensuring that our neighbors and our friends and our families have a real chance at recovery and that our community remains safe and healthy. Powell River is a strong community, compassionate community. We believe we can lead by example. Imagine a Powell River where people in crisis can walk into a facility and start treatment the same day, where public spaces are safe for children and families, where compassion is shown, not only through keeping people alive, but also helping them to rebuild their lives. This is a vision of Seoul, and we're ready to work with you to make this a reality. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you very much. So questions or suggestions from Council here tonight? Counsel Elliot.
Thank you for bringing your songs and introducing your organization. My question is, does your organization have some processes or things that you would invite some of us to join? Or anything that might be like an event to tell us about?
Yeah, we'll be bringing a lot forward in the in the short term. We're working really hard as a group to try to come up with some really feasible ideas. And we need a dry out bed here. I had I had two people phone me the other day. One is 70 days clean on his own, and he has a friend staying with him that needs rehab, that needs a dry out bed. And I had another girl phone me that was heavyweight, so she started on meth to lose the weight. She lost 100 pounds, but now she has a meth addiction, and she's going off to rehab. But I didn't even have the information to give her. There's no pamphlet, you know, everywhere there should be these pamphlets. How do you get to rehab? How do you get the help that you need? And that information isn't there, and we want to put that information together.
Thank you, Mr. Stitch. Other questions of Council? Counselor Selfcut.
So the question I asked about feasibility, this is what you're suggesting. You're already taking steps, and music is a huge symbol of that. It has been for me. It's helped me. I'm a survivor, actually, of in a family where there's been three immediate family members who are not. And so I feel what's going on because of my experience. And I'm really excited. Just one quick question. You've heard of I C M T. Does that does that help your cause?
One of the things that's been happening is my my mailbox is starting to fill up with people that have recovered, sending me their recovery stories so I can put it together into a book. So that can be available to motivate people saying, you know, because what works for one doesn't work for the other. Like Flash went up in the bush for a while, right? So having having a resource like that available to people is, you know, another step in the right direction. Having somebody there with that pamphlet everywhere, everywhere, just like just like they are there with the safe supply. Here's your here's your pamphlet. This is where recovery comes from. This is where we find you a bed. This is where counseling comes from. It's just not there.
So also.
The mic, please.
So also, the big thing has been gyms. I grew up in Alberta on a farm, so you know, not everybody has the gumption to, you know, stretch out their wings alone. If that may be, you know, I've been doing yoga for 15 years, things like that. I would have been three years substance clean August 20th, but I'm 50 days today, right now. And this has been 12 or 13 times I've been through the wiggle room. I know a lot of workers, and I've worked East Van, like I said, Edmonton to Tofino. Music recreational centers, cheaper passes maybe on that spectrum for us to get into the sauna and soak out. Like he said, I'm a rarity. You know, it's 95% and I'm in the 5% bubble that if I didn't substitute addiction for habit, be it cold water swimming all winter, working out for three hours, or punching people in the face in a boxing ring. There's a lot of modalities I do, but a jack of all trades, and I only master music.
Thank you.
Everybody's an addict. Some people just choose healthier addictions, right?
So we've got questions or suggestions from Counselor Palmer. The Mayor Wasno.
Thank you to Chair. I just want to say thank you for being here today and sharing your experiences, especially the musical one here that referred to Hastings. How long have you lived in our community, sir?
One and a half months.
And you came from Hastings?
I came from Gibson's. I play all the farmers markets on the coast. I had some.
You'll have to speak into the microphone again so that everyone can hear.
That's that's my bad. I'm so used to having a big voice. My parents passed away, and I pedaled a bicycle from Edmonton to Vancouver. I do August to September every every year. This is my fifth year for doing a fundraiser on cancer therapy. And I also have a Master Herbalist degree and things like that. It's not that you would never know that unless you approached me to know that I'm actually 10,000 years old on Seoul Farm, if you will. But again, I'm all over your your general discussion boards and my ears open. Flash being, look them up. My stuff is maybe political here and there, recreational cleanliness, and my music's like based towards that. And I'm just here to do maybe plant some heels and stay here for the winter. But I feel more welcome in Powell than than anywhere else. So if that answers your question.
That answered my question. Thanks for sharing. I wanted to get to the bottom of your story and and figure out what you're all about. I think that gives us a good idea, and we applaud what you're doing. And the one thing that I will say is if you could help these two gentlemen in any way, shape, or form, and the great things they're doing in our community, much appreciated because I wholly agree that this is a disease wholeheartedly. I lived it through my family and my father and all the rest of it with alcohol. So all the power to you. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Mayor Wasno.
Thank you. So you took me back to the 70s when I first got involved in helping to set up a live in situation for young people that were encouraged by their parents to use alcohol rather than the street drugs that were coming down from Toronto to Fredericton. The key part of that program was William Glazer's insistence for rights and responsibilities. And I guess my question to you is, do you believe that the combination of rights and responsibilities are essential to helping people with addiction?
Absolutely, and a purpose, right? Without a purpose, everybody is lost. I used to run the Wilderness Shellfish Co-op Seafood Plant, and half of my crew was marginalized. And just having a purpose, you know, they didn't care that they were at a minimum wage job. Having a purpose, you know, they came every day, nobody missed work.
Microphone.
Sorry, that one.
The suggestion was a hug is what people are looking for. All right, thank you. Any further questions from Council? All right, one question for you is if people wanted to get involved with Seoul, how might they find you or get in touch with your organization?
They can hit up Tony Stitch or Breann Bennett on Facebook. We're running a pretty open platform on there, and we're open to communication.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are moving on. Next up under new business is 12.1 2025 Grants in Aid. And.
Consent agenda?
Oh, sorry, consent agenda. My computers. Sorry, I skipped ahead. Consent agenda. I'm just checking with the crowd. Looks like we're going to have some people leave the audience, so maybe take a two minute recess to allow time for people to leave the room.
So is there a way to get air put on? Is that thing over there that we turn on sometimes?
Maybe.
Feeling benefocidal.
It is pretty. It is pretty hot and muggy in here.
Took the air conditioner over around the corner, it might not be on.
Russell's really interested at the first couple of things. They don't seem interested anymore.
It's on? It's just a lot of people in here.
I don't I don't think anybody.
30 more seconds if people need to leave the chambers, and we'll get started again.
I don't think anybody in the room wants to.
Some serious dancing.
Set up a city recoveries. You could, all we need to do is collect the tax money to pay for.
Go ahead.
We need to do. People in the room who could pay for it right here.
All right, are we, Counselor Palmer? Where'd Counselor Palmer go?
It was interesting. It's the same thing I thought.
Right. We will reconvene after that short recess. I'll ask folks to. If you're going to have conversation, you can just take it outside. We're getting our meeting started again. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to part eight, the consent agenda. And there is a motion in the package that August 19th, 2025 consent agenda be adopted. We have that motion. Counselor doubt at Committee of the Whole, we don't need a seconder. And so I'll move straight to voting. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now we are on to new business, 12.1 2025 Grants in Aid. There's a recommendation in the package, but there's also report, and I see a presentation. So I'll hand it over to staff to support Council on this topic.
Wonderful, thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the applicants for Council's 2025 Grant and Aid Program. The city received eight applications requesting a total of approximately 74,000, which exceeds the approved budget of 25,000 by approximately 49,000. All applicants met the eligibility criteria listed in Council Policy 261, and a summary of each application is provided in the report. Since this grant program was oversubscribed, two grant allocation options have been provided as a starting point for consideration, shown in Appendix C and also on the screen. I'll start with option one. In option one, this option awards all applicants with a minimum of $2,500, and this would total 20 grand. But because the budget is 25,000, there's 5,000 left to distribute. In this option, that remaining 5,000 is distributed equally among the applicants who requested more than 25,000. Now, the benefit of this option is that two applicants, E D A S and Townsite Heritage Society, receive full funding. They also are requesting the least amount of funding. All other applicants receive partial funding that would meaningfully contribute to their initiatives. This option aligns with the intent of the Grant and Aid Program, which is designed to support smaller scale community efforts, and it is equitable and transparent distribution method within the budget. The drawback to option one is that applicants requesting smaller amounts receive a higher percentage of their total request, which may be perceived as less equitable. Now, option two on the screen, this is the far right option. This option is to grant the amount based on pro rate equally based on the requested amount. So this results in all applicants receiving 34% of their request. The benefit of option two is that it is uniform percentage based distribution, which may be perceived as more proportional and fair. And I will also say option two is within the budget. The drawback to option two is that no applicant will receive full funding. With this summary, I'll conclude my presentation, and thank you so much for your time. And I'll also let you know that staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, CFO Denniston. We'll start with questions, so straight up questions. Does Council need any clarification from the report or more information before we get into discussion? All right, I don't see questions. Oh, Counsel Elliot, you got a question?
Oh, no, I thought we were past questions. I was going to make the motion in the package.
Okay, before there's a motion, I'm curious that there's two options in the report, and there's one recommended option. I am curious if there's anyone on Council that has a like a third option or wanted to explore any other possibilities? The only reason that I ask is at a recent council meeting when we are making decisions about community forests, we had a lot of motions and things fail. And so I just want to check in before we get into the rigmarole of a potentially complicated motion. Does anybody have a third path that I want to be aware of before we start? All right, let's move into motion and then start debating it. Counsel Elliot.
I move that the committee recommend that Council direct staff to distribute the 2025 Grant and Aid in accordance with option one as outlined in Appendix C of the report titled 2025 Grants in Aid dated August 19th, 2025.
All right, thank you. We don't need a seconder at Committee of the Whole. Let's move into discussion. Counselor Palmer.
To Chair, appreciate staff's work on this. I just have one question for clarification. We have two options that have been presented. I wholly support option one and staff's right, because it is staff's recommendation. I just have a question to staff, and that is, what was the overlying reasons for selecting option one and presented here today?
Through the Chair to Counselor Palmer. The overlying reason was that it most aligns with the purpose of the Grant and Aid Program, which is to support smaller initiatives. So option one doesn't penalize nonprofits for requesting, you know, smaller amounts. So the other benefit was that two of the applicants would receive full funding. So that was the rationale for option one, aligning best with this granting program.
Thank you for that. I wholly support option one. Thank you.
Counselor Selfcut.
Thank you. I struggled a bit with what would be fair. And looking at the different organizations, they're definitely not equal. So I support option one because larger needs, I think, really need to go to larger funding sources. And I think this maximizes the usefulness as far as I can see. It isn't equal in an arbitrary sense, but it is equal when you consider, I think that's the best we can do, really. And so I really appreciate the the numbers that our CFO worked out because it really fits my rationale and values. Thank you.
Any other comments from Council? I'll just share my own comments. Yeah, I support option one more than option two. Option two, I feel like could penalize people who don't don't ask for a lot and would also incentivize organizations in future years to ask for a lot because they know they're going to get a proportion, even though every year Council makes its decision independently. So so given the two options, I do support option one over option two. Any further comments? So the the motion, just clarification for staff. The motion is that we recommend that Council direct staff. And so this would come back to Council to be a final decision. Is that correct? Or does this this decision can happen at Council level? I saw staff nodding, it will go to Council. Yeah, because we are recommending to Council. Great, thank you very much. I will call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Nonopposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 12.2, update B C Provincial Nomination Program, B C P N P Entrepreneur Immigration E I Regional Stream. And manager. And manager Cuthbertson.
Thank you councillor Isaacson. Through the Chair to the rest of council. Today is just an opportunity for us to provide an update following the April 17th council meeting to let you know where we're at in the PNP program. That's the Provincial Nomination Program here in B.C., which looks at immigrants coming to our community as entrepreneurs for a regional stream. Following council's direction, staff submitted an application to the province to get back onto this program and were successfully admitted. As of July 24th, we are now on the Welcome B.C. website as a participating community in this initiative, listing the priority sectors as directed at the council meeting on April 17th for agriculture, motion picture and sound recording, computer system design, air transportation support services, resorts, food manufacturing and scientific technical consulting. Staff have attended training by the BCPNP Concierge Team and have now finalized a structured and transparent process for receiving, evaluating and referring applicants aligned with the provincial guidelines and common best practices from other communities. A flowchart that summarizes that process has been supplied as Appendix B to the report. To run through this process very briefly, applicants need to email the PNP email address in order to be accepted into the program and will receive further communication through that email address and program specifics. They will then be requested to complete an expression of interest form and that will be assessed through staff using a scored matrix in order to determine the success of the applicant. This will focus on things such as their business concept, economic impact, the viability of their plan and the quality of their plan amongst other things. Applicants scoring 70% or higher in this process will be considered for further steps. This high threshold is to ensure that we have a high standard of applicant and consistency in our selection process. Successful applicants in this stream would then be taken further into a preliminary interview, which would be virtual. This is an opportunity to assess the applicant's understanding of our local context, assess their communication skills and their overall fit within our community to assess directly. If successful in this part, they'll be invited for an exploratory visit and staff have a sample itinerary of what this could look like, although it will be tailored to each individual applicant to make it a worthwhile experience for them, given it is at their own cost that they are attending our community. They'll then have an opportunity to meet with elected officials at that point. And following their meeting, they can choose to revise their business plan if required. If at that point they have succeeded, staff will complete a referral to the province who then complete their own due diligence. In terms of communication, this is going live on the city's website this week with full details, the details on the whole application process and our communications with the applicants will continue to be refined as the program evolves. However, we feel we're in a position now to take this forward on a consistent, transparent basis. Importantly, staff will liaise directly with the applicants rather than with any consultants in order for us to continuously assess the applicant, their language proficiency, cultural and community fit and their business intent. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And just clarification, you're providing an update. No decision of council is required tonight. This is for information only, but this is an opportunity for us to ask questions. All right, we've got councillor Dowd and councillor Elliot and then Mayor Wasno. Did I see your hand up? Councillor Dowd.
So thanks for the report. You know, it looks pretty good to me. I've just got a couple of questions and when I look at the process that's outlined in the report, paragraph three starts out talking about the city's designated contact who will review applications, et cetera. And then from paragraph number four, it talks about and onwards and a couple of places, it talks about staff's designated contact. And I'm thinking if they're the same person, it should probably be written the same way in the different articles is. So the first question, is there one individual contact who is the city's and the staff's designated person? And the other one is, is that contact person a city staff person or would it be a consultant or somebody outside of city staff?
Through the Chair to councillor Dowd, thank you. That is a an oversight. It is the same person. It is the designated person or contact is currently a staff employee who would be under the purview of the CAO in terms of completing the form to who is to the province for who the designated contact is at the city.
Okay, so all that needs is just a really short wording change in one of the paragraphs somewhere. Oh, thanks. I do actually read these things.
It's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dowd, councillor Elliot and then Mayor Wasno.
Thank you Chair and thank you so much for the report. Under the key considerations in your report, you talk about things that council may wish to consider. Is that once we're up and operating and we have some idea of what what those costs would be? Or is that something you're thinking we need to consider in the near future?
Through the Chair to councillor Elliot. I would expect to have a better idea after a year of the program being in place as to what types of costs are involved. But it is likely to depend on the number of applications received and exploratory visits conducted. There's some small cost elements such as perhaps, you know, taking the applicant who's come here out for an informal lunch meeting, at which point some costs may be incurred. And, you know, if that's very frequent, then there would be a higher cost, for example. Accordingly, if there's a larger number of applicants, then there may be a higher number of hours of staff time required that may need to be looked at as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wasno.
Thank you. I think it's important to look at cost benefit analysis prior to recommending to council that we move to re-enter the PNP program. I talked with a number of mayors around the province, all who have seen significant benefits from this program. It also raises the thought in my mind, I'm wondering how many people here had parents, grandparents or great-grandparents that came to Canada to create opportunities. I know my great-great-grandparents came to settle outside of Edmonton. All they had to do was guarantee that they were going to clear the land and grow crops. And that was considered to be the only economic opportunity that the government of Canada at that time required. So I'm just hoping that we can take a really judicious approach to balance the cost benefit and welcome as many people who have proven the ability to start up companies and create wealth in a community. Thank you very much for the.
Thank you councillor Southcott.
Thank you Chair. Just to clarify for my own understanding, this program essentially is a provincial program. Is there any expectation that the city would be engaging anyone or companies or those who might be looking for people who could become nominees within the community? Like is there, would there be connections with existing yeah, businesses, companies, industry, whatever? And then the reason why I ask that is because it's clearly we're in a time where we're in transition and we're really looking for opportunity, which is the reason why I support this. Even though I do, I hold reservations that we're in the April report for this program. It really does. It's going to take staff time probably. And there's really not necessarily guarantees that much is going to come out of it. However, the potential is is the is promising. And at this time, we need promise as far as I can see. So I'm wondering if that if networking is going to be any part of what staff does within the community.
Through the Chair to councillor Southcott. That's not something that we've particularly discussed as a role of staff in this program at this stage. However, maybe once the program is up and running and we have communicated it with our local partners, that will help to get the word out to them more directly to then send the applicants to us so that we can follow up with the applicants directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Palm.
Thank you to the Chair. Appreciate the presentation here today. I don't know too much about this program, but my first question is, this has been running for some time in other communities. Is that correct?
Through the Chair to councillor Palm. Yes, this was a regional pilot program initially brought in around the end of 2018.
Have we reached out to any of the other communities to ask the questions in regard to staff time? How much time is allocated in these communities? And in terms of costs, how those are handled in other entities? Have we done that research?
Through the Chair to councillor Palm. Yes, there's more details on that in the April 17th report when we brought that to the council meeting for consideration. We reached out to some local communities similar to our own in terms of size and capacity. There were a number that used consultants to take on this work and it's anticipated to take between six to eight hours a week of staff time or consultant time in the busy periods and slightly less when it's quieter.
Very much. And I guess the last question, is it more or less aimed at individuals? Or could it be aimed at other entity, any incorporated entities?
Through the Chair to councillor Palm. My experience has been that this is more because it's an entrepreneurial program, something that we've seen individuals approach us with as opposed to companies. But I could clarify.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. See, no further questions. I think we're done on this topic. Thank you very much, manager Cuthbertson. All right, no introduction to late items or notice of motion. So the last item on our agenda is public clarification. So just a reminder to the public, public clarification is for members of the public to ask questions to clarify items discussed during the meeting for a maximum of two minutes. And we also have the phone number online, 1-888-782-7295, meeting ID 832-663-948, and then the pound sign. Do we have any questions from the public today?
Mayor and council, Don Edwards. My question is, does council feel that they made the right decision on okaying the second affordable housing?
That item was not on our agenda tonight and so.
Did Sherry Burton not touch on housing?
It's not a part of our business agenda tonight, so it wasn't a part of our discussions tonight.
Would I have the liberty to present you all with a letter?
Oh, yeah, you can hand it to our deputy corporate officer and it can get to, yeah, and it will get to council. Yep, thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Diane Sparks. I have a question. Coming at the end of this, council was required to discuss the 24/7 Shelter and OPS project on Burnett Street in a closed meeting. In that meeting, a decision was made to lease the site for only $2 per year for five years.
Going to interrupt you.
Now that that decision has been made, the electorate are entitled to know how each of the members of council voted. Please provide us the result of this vote.
Ms. Sparks, that item was not on our agenda tonight and we also can't disclose discussions of a closed nature until publicly disclosed. So we're unable to answer your question tonight.
Why does the totalitarian council not give the taxpayers transparency?
Thank you. Any further questions from the public today? Any online? All right, our business is concluded. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.